Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you to join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we start, I would like to announce that Councilmember John Ebner is attending by telephone tonight. He is on a work assignment in Wisconsin, and he has...all the appropriate notices have been posted. He has assured us he's posted it on the door of his hotel room, and the door is open for the people who are there. Is he on the phone yet?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, John, welcome.
Thank you.
And because of that, all of the votes this evening, including the appearances, will have to be done by roll call. So, Madam Clerk, are you calling the roll, or am I?
I will do that.
Please, thank you.
Mayor Morris?
Here.
Mayor Portem Vienna?
Here.
Councilmember Bedar?
Here.
Councilmember Bertone?
Here.
Councilmember Ebner?
Here.
Let the record reflect all councilmembers are in attendance.
Okay. And before we open the floor for oral communications, I do have an introduction I'd like to make. The Parks and Recreation Commission has a youth member of the commission, and we have recently selected Ivan Maganya. Ivan, would you please stand up? Ivan has been interested and has been selected to be a part of the Parks and Recreation Commission for this year. We'll even let you say something if you'd like to.
Thank you for letting me add about some of these things.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to address the City Council. The rules are you need to come forward to the microphone. There is a three-minute time limit. If you are speaking, you have a green light for two minutes, and then you have an orange light for one minute, and then when the red light comes on, your time is up. So, we ask or invite you to tell us who you are and where you live. That is not a requirement to be able to participate in oral communications to the City Council. So, with that in mind, would anybody like to address the City Council?
Good evening, councilmembers. Mr. Mayor, my name is Dave Milbrandt. I'm one of the government teachers at San Dimas High School. Just wanted to let you folks know that we have a few of our students in the audience this evening as part of a class project. They had an option to come to a council meeting. So, they're going to listen in on what you folks do here every week, week in and week out. They might come up to you and ask for a photograph. They're told to get photographic evidence, so you might be in a selfie. It will not be on social media or anywhere inappropriate, but just to verify that they were here and they were listening. Thank you for the opportunity for our students and for all the citizens to come out to hear what our city does and how they help our residents. Thank you.
Well, hello, City Council. How are you today? It's been great running for mayor, shaking hands, kissing babies, and just knocking on doors, connecting with people. And, Mr. Morris, I'm just going to acknowledge the fact that Mr. Morris has talked to my neighbor and made certain statements that Bobby thinks him out to get him. Now, everybody knows that. There has been, you know, a lawsuit between Morris and I, and I have made lots of efforts on trying to resolve certain matters such as, you know, the covenant that I signed, you know, with Mr. Morris making representation. The city's taken action, demolished the unit, sign it, you know, that kind of thing. I was forced into it. But also too, and so I recorded, I recorded those statements because protecting myself. And so I can go into greater depth and all that, but, you know, it's really important to me that the truth be told. I am running from here because I care for people and I want to dedicate myself doing that kind of thing. But also too, unfortunately, now, there are recordings that are not, by the way, that are not under any type of, you know, how can you say that? Recordings that are not under the, what did you call it? No expectations of privacy, walking down, you know, the street, you know, you're saying hi to people at the mailbox. I want you guys to listen to this.
We have the electrical one which you shouldn't have. Oh, is that right?
Electrical box.
Once the property's divided, they don't want, they really like to have one meter, but, you know, doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. So, in other words, in other words, talking to Mr. Morris about my gas meter, he promised to me in 2006, this is at the mailbox, public mailbox sidewalk, kids in the backseat, you know, just, okay, and he's the mayor too. So, you find, so, but, you know, I shouldn't have had the electrical, which he gave it to me. That's what he said. He's the author of confusion in my life. And then, you know, but he said the city doesn't want it unless there's a property split, but it doesn't matter. Now, if I was to be the mayor and I've said the city didn't matter, I'd probably have Kendra who'd probably punch me in the nose, not Ryan, because I don't know if I'd wake up. But the thing about it is, seriously, I mean, you know, Mr. Morris representing, by the way, he said that I shouldn't have had, I should not have had the electrical. Well, let me see here. So, in fear for my kids, my wife, pregnant wife, wanting to move, wanting to leave the city, my mother never coming back and joining the back house and that kind of thing. Because it was promised to me by you in 2006, and you were assisting me on that during the water and the electric. It was promised to me by that it would happen in your office.
I never ever did any work on anything except the electrical. And at the same, and there was a discussion of the water. I never talked to you about the kids.
Okay, so anyway, anyway, back when 2006, I said, hey, you know, I have Palma Honi helping me out.
Your time is up.
Oh, are you sure?
Yes, it is.
Want to hit you with a hammer? Okay, no problem. God bless you guys, thank you. Just want the truth to be told, that's all. I want it to be known. The covenant needs to be lifted, it's unenforceable, it was obtained dishonestly, and I've suffered greatly for it. And I also would like to invite anybody that would like to know more, like Mr. Morris had done, when he offered to talk in riddles and tell everybody about what happened, I want to also explain to what happened too. I want resolution, and that's it.
Bobby, why don't you tell them that you filed a lawsuit, you lost the lawsuit, the judge said he did not believe your testimony, and he said that in the written decisions, and you were charged the cost of the lawsuit.
Photocopies.
Paid those.
Okay.
Okay.
What's your point?
At least let the people know that, too.
Okay, then let me, let me, let the people know.
No, but your time is up. Your time is up. It has expired.
Okay. You've been sued how many times for being a malpractice lawyer?
Your time has expired.
Okay, and you polished everything up really good in court.
Your time has expired.
And by the way, in front of the judge, I said you were lying in front of the court, in front of the judge.
Your time has expired.
Right. And by the way, my lawyer died. I wasn't, I had a record of myself.
Your time has expired.
Okay.
You're out of order. Anyone else like to address the City Council? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I have been informed that John would like to make some comments regarding consent agenda before we consider it further.
Yes, Kurt, just one minor clarification. So, to the City Council minutes of June 11th, which is item 3B, page 5, so, that's page 2 of the actual minutes for June 11th, but about the fourth paragraph down, talking about the crosswalk, and I think it would be better clarified if it mentioned where that crosswalk was. So, I would just say, you know, at San Dimas Avenue and Commercial Street.
Okay, does anybody object to making that change to the minutes?
With that, I move approval.
Second.
Well, you have to take a vote on this one by individuals. Anybody have anything you want to say before we vote? Okay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll for the vote, please?
Mayor Morris, your vote.
Yes.
Mayor Portem Vienna, your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Bedar, your vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertone?
Yes.
Councilmember Ebner?
Aye.
That's a 5-0 vote.
Okay, that, the motion carries by a 5-0 unanimous vote. That's the end of the consent calendar, and the next item is other business. First is a gold line update.
Yes, just a couple of quick items. The Gold Line Authority has, as we've reported in the past, issued the contract for the construction phase of the project, which would extend the gold line from its current terminus in Azusa currently to Pomona, and the contractor has started some of the preliminary work. Some of the residents may have recognized that over the last month, there has been some work that's been going on along the right-of-way. Most of that is survey work and utility work, but there have been some situations where there has been some slight delays at some of the crossings throughout the city, and that work will continue throughout the project. The Gold Line Authority also is planning on holding some community open house meetings starting in the early March. They realize that, you know, there's been several months since they've actually had some community meetings, updating the community on the project itself and the timeline. So, if you want to go to the city's website, we have information which identifies the dates and times and locations of those specific meetings, and you can find out more information about that. But other than that, that's about all I have to report tonight.
Thank you. Any questions of City Manager regarding that matter? Next is a temporary extension of the existing mobile home accord to June 30, 2020.
Yeah, just as way of background, the Mobile Home Accord is a voluntary agreement between the five mobile home parks. There are five mobile home parks within the city of San Dimas and the residents who reside in those parks. The accord was first established back in 1995, and it's a voluntary document that the owners and the residents have agreed to, which kind of sets out some parameters that deal with the base rent amounts, how much rents can increase, and what are allowable pass-through items from the park owners to the park residents. It's not a rent control, it's a voluntary accord, but it also protects the rights of the park owners, which allows them to have a reasonable return on their investment, and it also protects the park residents where the rents are somewhat capped so that they don't actually receive excessive rents or excessive pass-throughs. The accord has a five-year term, and it's been renewed every five years. The current accord, or the last accord, expired December 31st, 2019. We have been negotiating and talking to some of the park owners. There are a couple of elements of the accord that some of the owners would like to discuss further. So, since there's currently, the current accord expired the end of December, and we don't have an existing accord, what we're asking for, and the park owners have agreed to, is a six-month extension of the existing accord, which would make it run through June 30th of 2020, to allow us time to meet with the park owners and the residents to work out some of the potential changes to the accord. In fact, there's a meeting this Thursday with some of the park owners to talk about some of their issues and concerns. So, what's before you tonight is a recommendation for a six-month extension of the existing accord through June 30th, 2020. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have one question. Who represents the renters?
What we, traditionally, what we had in the past is that we have the park management contact the residents, and it's a voluntary, we have a community meeting, and anyone from the community, each of the five park communities who wants to attend a meeting would be attending and participating.
So, it's open to all?
It's open to all residents, yeah.
So, they're not kicked by the park owner?
No, it's a public meeting, yeah.
Initially, they were, there were representatives of each of the parks. It was a formal, the creation of the accord took several months, and it was a formal, there were a lot of meetings, and so it was all, it was agreed to on everybody's part, and the city is a party to it on behalf of the residents. And that's the present.
I have a comment when you have a chance.
Go ahead.
I was talking to some mobile home residents over the weekend, and one example that, I heard this a couple times, about the sort of the floor of 3%. So, in the current accord, if the CPI is less than 3%, park owners can still raise the rents 3%. So, just one example that brought this home, one gentleman, and he said that he got a $20 increase, CPI increase, and then he got a notice from the park that his rent was going up $23. So, you know, it doesn't sound like a lot, but it was a lot to him. So, I'm just wondering about that 3% because inflation has been a lot lower than it was when we originally worked on this back in the 90s. And, I don't, maybe that number should be 2, or maybe it should be something else, 2.5, but Ken, I was just wondering if that was something that you would, you know, talking about speaking on behalf of the park residents, I don't know if you've heard that?
John, did he?
I'm just giving you that message now, if you haven't.
John, did he tell you about the upper limit? Because five years ago, when we renegotiated this again, the park owners were willing to drop the bottom if the top was increased, and the residents were very much against not having the top increased. Their primary concern was to make sure they would not be, if the cost of living increased substantially, their rents would not. And so they have always been more concerned, the residents, with the top number, and they realized that agreeing to the 3 at the low end is what buys them the limit on the top.
Yeah, I remember that as a compromise, right, and it's a good point, but I don't know what the, I know, it sounds like the owners, I don't know what the owners are asking for that Ken is referring to, but I just want to make sure that if the owners are asking for something, again, just to put that out there, something you might want to talk to, the management of the mobile home parks may not, I don't know who the best representatives are, but you may want some residents who are, we used to have some residents who were really active, and I'm not sure if we still have that, those kind of resident groups these days.
Yeah, and we actually have not set those resident meetings yet because we wanted to find out if there were, what the issues were with the owners, and then we would schedule the meetings with the residents. So, we have not had a forum for them to provide their input as of yet, but I'll make note of that.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
Ken, what time is that meeting on Thursday?
It's 1:30 in the afternoon. Here? Yes.
Anything else on the accord? Okay, we will, excuse me, we can move on to the public hearing, and there is a memo to postpone the public hearing.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Oh, right, okay.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve an extension of the accord to June 30, 2020. All in favor, signified by aye, or those opposed say no when your name is called in the roll call.
Mayor Morris?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Vienna?
Aye.
Councilmember Bedar?
Aye.
Councilmember Bertone?
Aye.
Councilmember Ebner?
Aye.
That passes by a 5-0 vote.
Okay, duly noted. The next item for a public hearing, there is, will be a postponement of that, you have a date for the postponement, or is it to a next?
Actually, if I can call on Ms. Garwick to kind of give a background as far as the item and the reason for the postponement.
This is for the directional signs, private directional signs in the right-of-way. The hearing is set for next meeting, so the 25th, at 7:00 PM. We inadvertently advertised for tonight's meeting, and it was, it's actually set for next, next meeting because we had a, we have to hear, go through the planning commission, and they have to either approve it, or they approved it on the 6th, and recommended approval to council.
So, it asked the city attorney, so it was a notice public hearing. Would it be appropriate to open the public hearing, and then, or would we?
No, we don't need to open it, but we should continue it to a date certain. Have the council vote to continue it to a date certain.
Okay.
So, we don't have to.
Re-notice it.
Right.
Can we say we're going to do it on the 25th?
That is correct.
I move that we postpone it to the 25th.
Second. We have a motion and second to postpone to the 25th. Any further discussion? Okay, when your name is called, please signify by aye if you're in favor, or nay if you're against. Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Vienna?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Vienna?
Huh? Oh.
Councilmember Bedar?
Aye.
Councilmember Bertone?
Aye.
Councilmember Ebner?
Aye.
That passes with a 5-0 vote.
Okay, that brings us back to oral communications. Members of the audience have another opportunity. The rules are the same, except the time limit is five minutes for this session. Anybody want to address the City Council?
Well, you might as well. You told me to, you told me to talk to the people about losing, losing, with your right, Mr. Morris. So, anyway, I mean, I want to, I want to say that, yeah, I lost. It was Morris, his brother, who was his lawyer, who I met at the law office, and my lawyer prior to him dying, saying he should have never been his lawyer because there's a conflict of interest. I'd go into the law firm and talk about how Mr. Morris has helped me. So, so, yeah, I lost, and I don't think it was very fair. I think the whole land use thing, the covenants are just social, kind of a socialistic move. But, you know, I want to respect mayor. I tried to make a statement of closure a couple of weeks ago, if you just review the meetings, but then you'll, you'll see that Mr. Morris had made mention that, oh, Bobby's out to get me, and then my next neighbor down the street tells me, oh, he's saying this and this about you, and, you know, it's fine. I mean, just go ahead and talk, but I have, I'm an American, I have a first amendment right, and I can express myself, I can criticize politics, I can criticize politicians and that kind of thing. And what's heartbreaking is it really spoiled me, and this is really, you know, it really hurt me, and out of fear.
You know, I felt like I had a gun on my head when I had to sign that.
I'm telling him, I had a gun.
You weren't going to be able to use the.
So, so, listen, by the way, that's my three, I have my five minutes.
Wait a minute, no, wait a second.
I have my five minutes.
Hey, wait a minute.
Okay, restore my time.
You may make comments, you may not play recordings.
Who says?
You're not permitted to.
Okay.
This is public comment from you.
That's fine, that's fine, okay, I won't play the recording. But I told Mr. Morris, I felt like I had a gun to my head in his law office signing this covenant. I didn't understand it. I built the house, I spent a quarter of a million dollars on this property for him to call me, got to take actions. So, he's taking action, demolish the unit, you know, and I got occupancy, but then according to Kurt Morris, you said I was there illegally, recording in fear, meaning my permits were going to be spied, red-tagged, my pregnant wife, my mother never moving, and it just, put it this way, it's a disaster. But prior to that, last week, I, you know, you said the city's taking action to, but what did you say in court, Mr. Morris? That's a whole different ball, that's a whole different ball of wax. What did you say in court about all these questions, the things that are public record in Pomona Court? I mean, you, matter of fact, don't answer, you're not going to answer. But anyway, the recordings I did in fear, and you have a right to record when people are threatening you, and I was, those things are public record, and I've been exhausting myself trying to get this covenant returned, the city's enforcing an illegal document that should not be, it was done through force, you know, I mean, you know, and you're a mayor of law, you have an expectation of high accountability. I'm not out to get him. You know, he said I was out, from my friend Dave. My friend Dave, known for 40 years, he's like, Bob, Bobby, Kirk's calling me, telling me you're, you're out to get him, when all I simply said is you were out there taking pictures on his property, and I isn't a quandary, I didn't know if you, you were going over to have a coffee with, I just mentioned it, and I thought it was strange because it was, my signs were there, but I want to, I'm making a statement of closure. I'm done, but I want the city and people to know the truth. The truth is, you threatened me, the covenant should not be on my property. I got a really beautiful piece of property, a 4,000-square-foot house, a back house, I have three kids, I want to leave them. Who wants a covenant, limiting their use of property? I just want truth, and, you know, I mean, I don't want to get spiritual because I'm not a religious person, but I believe in a personal relationship with God, and I really have desired to, you know, to connect with him, I shook his hand, but then, you know, it's kind of a bummer when, you know, you make these efforts to try to, you know, resolve matters, but it's impossible. Some people are just very difficult like that. Anyway, statement of closure, I want the covenant removed, it doesn't mean to be there, it shouldn't be there, you know, and I never want to, Mr. Morris, you're retiring, I wish you all the best, I really do, and quite frankly, I feel like I've had my piece, so I don't ever want to even respond, if I hear a neighbor tell me, Bobby, he said that you were crazy, you know, yeah, I'm upset, but I'm saying it in a respectful, gentle tone. I deserve, the city needs to take heed to what is right, what is honest, and what is fair, and say, hey, wait a minute, you know, that thing needs, that covenant needs to simply go. I deserve as a father, as an American person, to live the dream. I spent a quarter of a million dollars on this property, building a house, Morris saying, I'm a lawyer, I can help you, got my utilities. Ask Eric, Eric knows the whole story. He's like the butler in a murder mystery. He sees all, Eric is the one that says, Bobby, I don't know what's going on, I spoke to Eric, he's like, Kirk said to have you the utilities, the city said you can't have them. He was helping me out, I'm still at a loss, like, what happened here with Mr. Morris? And then threatening to have me have, have to sign this covenant. Am I timed up?
Time's up.
All right, thank you, sir. I never want to come in here again unless I'm the mayor, I want my driveway, and I really, I really want the best for you, okay? Sorry I have to do this, sorry I have to come in and just be so, I don't know, it's heartbreaking, but anyway.
Time is up.
Thanks, Mr. Morris, thanks.
Anyone else like to address the City Council? Okay, then we'll move on to the City Manager.
Yes, a couple items that I'd like to report on. First is that we did have a study session, which was an open public meeting, which was 5 o'clock prior to the City Council regular meeting tonight. There was one item that was continued, and that was, there was a request from some residents to allow for a policy, to allow for decorative lights in Parkway Trees. That item was continued because there were some residents who wouldn't be able to make the meeting tonight, so that'll be set for another agenda. The other item that we talked about was a National Night Out program or activities. The city has participated in the National Night Out program for a number of years, and there have been some differences as far as how, what type of activity we would want to have going forward. So, the City Council gave staff direction to work towards a singular community event for National Night Out, as well as trying to work with local residents who want to have a neighborhood event in addition to that. So, we'll be trying to put together a program that would accommodate both of those kinds of activities. So, that was discussed at the study session. Also want to report that the annual State of the City address, which is the mayor's address on the State of the City, will be on Thursday, February 20th, at 7:30 AM in the Senior Center. This is an event that's hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, and if you'd like more information about that. about that event, please go to the city's website or the chamber's website, and you can find out more information about that. And as the mayor is retiring, this will be his last State of the City address, so we expect great things. Also, we will have the Ask the Mayor show, which will be live this Thursday evening at 7:00. So if you're interested in wanting to ask the mayor or find out about things that are going on in the community, you can turn to Channel 3 K West and watch that show live, 7:00 on Thursday evening. Also, I'd like to call on Henry Now, our community development director, who has an update and some information regarding the specific Plan 23 moratorium process that we've been working through.
Thank you, Ken. Good evening, mayor, and members of the city council, as well as the public. I just wanted to inform the council and the public that the survey that the planning department was conducting regarding the planning of specific Plan 23 ended this past Sunday, February 9, and the staff is currently compiling and analyzing that survey data. Therefore, the planning department would like to invite the public to an update meeting regarding the planning of the specific Plan 23 planning area for next Wednesday, February 19, located at the senior center, that's located directly across from city hall, at 7:00 PM. Additionally, staff is tentatively scheduling the March 10 study session, a joint study session between the city council and planning commission to provide the updated information from the survey. That concludes my presentation.
One last, one last calendar item is that the next city council meeting, which will be February 25, there will be a 5:00 study session, and that's an opportunity for, the city's fiscal year runs from July 1 through June 30. So we're just over halfway through our current fiscal year, and so at this meeting, we will be providing the city council an update as far as where we are with our finances midway through the current fiscal year. And also, this begins our budget process as we're preparing for our next fiscal year. So this will be an opportunity for us to get some information from the city council on some of their priorities as far as what they think might be included in the budget for next year. It's a public meeting, it is, again, at 5:00, it'll be held in the city council conference room, and it's open to the public, so if you're interested in the city's finances or the city's budget, this would be a good opportunity for you to get some more information. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, no items tonight.
We'll now ask the city council members, anybody attend a meeting at the expense of the city since the last report, at the last meeting? Seeing nobody respond, we'll move on to comments by the council members, and start with Ryan.
Thank you, mayor. First, I want to thank our youth commissioner that's here tonight, I'm very excited to see that position filled. It's been some time trying to do that, and I look forward to your contributions to the Parks and Rec Commission. Secondly, as it relates to the budget process, I would hope, as we did last year, I'd love to hear from each director on what their priorities are, to be presented as well to the council as we start the budget process. I found it helpful to see where each one of the department heads felt their priorities were, and then go through that iterative process with the city manager so we can prioritize those. It's always good for council to have our projects, but the reality of it is, I trust the department heads and the city manager to also come up with priorities in the city. So I'd like to see something similar to what we did last year, but we're ahead of it this time, not so late in the game. The candidate forum was the other week, and that was a good event, I think each one of the candidates did a pretty good job. I encourage members of the community that are interested in this upcoming election to pay attention. You can actually watch the candidate forum, it is on K West, available on YouTube as well, and the city's website. Go ahead and get to know each one of those candidates, and make an informed decision. The election's right around the corner, and people are already voting. And lastly, I had a conversation with Ken a little bit ago, I received a number of calls today from members of the community who are being impacted by homelessness, but not homelessness in the context of the day-to-day, but rather the homelessness that comes with the shelter that the church runs once a year. And so this is the third or fourth year that we've had this shelter there. Local businesses called complaining, finding folks drugged out and passed out behind their businesses and restaurants because they won't be let back into the shelter when they're high, and the fact of the matter that they're finding hype needles all over the place, and they're being told they need to clean them up. So I'd like, and I've requested from Ken, a report from the city that highlights, since that shelter has started, which is part of the roving shelter, how many calls for service that we've seen during the time that the shelter is there, both from the sheriff's department as well as the fire department, and I'd like to have a good discussion about that. I have people calling complaining that it's a public nuisance that we're allowing, and I do have concern regarding the impact that's having, especially to a couple of those businesses in that area, and I've also heard a number of vehicles were broken into as well during this time, so I'd be curious what those numbers are as well. That shelter is roving, which means it starts in La Puente, La Puente or Hacienda Heights, it actually brings folks from all the community, and they follow the roving shelter all the way around, and we happen to be the end of the line. And so it just seems, as I've driven down Benita the last two weeks, or last week, actually, I've seen the fire department there at least twice. So I'm curious what's going on, and I think we need to have a discussion about it, and how we protect the citizens during this time, if we're going to continue to have that, or if the church is going to continue to have it. So that's all I got, and thank you.
Thank you. John?
I have nothing to add. Thanks for having me join.
Okay, well, have a good trip, stay warm.
Yeah, thank you, that's 29.
29, well, that's warm for you.
Yeah, I was in the middle of the day.
Oh. Emmett?
Not much to say, I just, sorry. Not much to say, just, I think we ought to acknowledge that the government class from San Dimas High School, thank you guys for coming, and I hope it's enlightening, and I'm sure that we'll see you guys somewhere down line at our next government council meeting, when you're here and you act like you're one of us, and you are. Outside of that, nothing more to say, we can move on to close, closed session.
The city manager mentioned about the gold line. The gold line is coming, and there will be an open house. I didn't give the date, though, the date is March 12, which is a Thursday, at 5:30, and I imagine it's in the senior center?
Either the senior center or the community, Bill, I'm not quite sure.
It'll be here at city hall. And anyways, the gold line, March the 12, this is just Thursday, and if you have any questions or comments, please attend, and this is your opportunity to find out of what you need to know about the gold line, and that's it. Thank you. I have nothing to add. We will be having a closed session at the, that will convene in five minutes after we recess this, adjourn this meeting. So that concludes our business for this evening, except for the closed session. We are now adjourned here, or to be recessed here, actually, to reconvene in the council chamber or conference room in five minutes, and there will be an announcement after the meeting, if there's anything to announce, or there will be an announcement by the city attorney, there is nothing to announce, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I have, I have one suggestion, maybe?
Yes.
Mr. Millbrant's mentioned that the students might want a picture with the council, so maybe if the council's amenable?
Okay, we'll delay, we'll delay the meeting long enough to take any pictures you want to take.
So maybe if the students want to come down, and the council is amenable, we can take one group shot, and that, we can, will that work, Dave?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Okay, we are in recess.